... regulations that were proposed by the Board of Health just over a month ago. For this hearing, I want to begin by acknowledging Councilwoman Blackwell, who is here. And I'm conscious of your time, I'm gonna debate, I don't know if either of you would like to, next evening, but I'm gonna debate you up, yourself. Yeah, very good.
Let me first, as always, thank God for the privilege of being here today, and for the very, very important evening. I learned about ten minutes before the press conference yesterday, of this new move in dealing with feeding and not to the community. And there are many parts of it, absolutely, we believe that people deserve, as was stated in the mayor's statement, that we believe people need to be able to quote, "Sit down and take more meals inside away from heat and cold when it comes, vehicles exhaust and distractions up the street." Having said that, it sounds great, but we all know it does not bear respect. Certainly, we believe that even with the move to try to do feeding on the northeast corner or close towards the city hall, you're going to have the issue of what happens after people eat. Even if you're prepared to feed some four to five hundred people a day, as they be there, as soon as they eat their food, they're gonna go back to the same places they already found, because we have to have more shelter there. We're not going to resolve the problem without places for people to go. We also are concerned about churches, we're concerned about schools, we have this part of the curriculum that students do public service, and they come and they feed on the parkway. I've heard this, the issue of people getting food out of trucks, and, but, I have four exposures in my area, they hand feed their food from trucks, so that doesn't make it anything wrong with it. And certainly, if an occupied Philadelphia nobody does, I don't think as people come and that they try to offer food on the parkway or any place, that certainly would exacerbate the situation. I think it is quite obvious that we have the Barnes Building, Hotel, and certainly the Barnes Foundation, which I support, coming in town, and we afford them one thousand percent. But we don't believe we should further victimize people, already victims, victims of poverty, victims of problems, victims in so many ways, and exacerbate the situation by saying that, making them feel even more like victims, saying they are wrong, and then setting up a negative approach to the problem. To say that people who feed outside, who feed people who live on the streets, will be penalized twice, and then fined up to maybe a hundred fifty dollars, is just unfair. It's a negative approach to a problem, a societal problem. That's not the way to do it. You want people not to eat on the streets, then you have to come up with ways that they eat inside, that they sleep inside. And what's going on here, we have the only night cafe open three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So we have to have more night cafes, we have to have people, all kinds of places for people to go, low-demand shelters, housing, shelters, transitional housing. If we want to do something about this problem, then we have to make the right investments that make the difference for people who go on the streets. Let's be fair, let's not further punish victims, and make them feel that they are part of something that they didn't feel. Thank you very much.
Apparently I have the opportunity to follow the queen of Philadelphia.
I'm Brian Jenkins, I'm the executive director of Children 300 Ministry of Philadelphia. We're located at 1116 Spring Garden Street, which is our headquarters. We are probably one of the largest food distribution programs in the city, which has a hundred thousand meals a year. To the homeless and those that are less fortunate, we have indoor and outdoor feeding programs. We have locations in Center City, West Philadelphia, and Post Town, and we have an outdoor feeding program doing this warm-up at 16th and Avenger Franklin Park. We'd like to serve the city in a way that we are not moving, we are going to stay at 16th and Avenger Franklin Park for one Saturday. But also stand in solidarity, we had a meeting on March the thirteenth with several organizations. One was the seventy-three churches that are part of the Children 300 Alliance of Churches. Councilwoman Jane Blackwell's office is serviced by Mr. Christopher Riddick and Esquire, Living Church of Fairmont, Logan Barnes Ministry, the Franklin Family, and then also the Peaceful Helms Philadelphia, with recent statements that I'm about to make. We are totally against, one, the legislation that the mayor has proposed. First of all, we need to address those issues in particular. One, it is clear that it's not about a health issue. It is about getting the homeless people off the parkway. The mayor's meeting is nearly in its press conference yesterday, the goal was to get them indoors. They are not of them, they are not of those, they are citizens of this community. And just like anybody else has a right to eat in the park, our homeless citizens have a right to eat in this park, because God created them, and if God created them, they're just as important, whether you have a million dollars in your pocket, or if you don't have a dime to rub together. The idea that they only decided to create one location around City Hall as for individuals or groups that are currently feeding outside and come to, shows that they're only interested in the issue in Center City, Philadelphia. They're interested in Benjamin Franklin Parkway, around Great House, up JFK, around City Hall. They're not interested in any other part of the city. But the ban itself, the ban itself is for the entire city of Philadelphia. That means people who are currently feeding outdoors in Germantown, in North Philadelphia, in South Philadelphia, Northeast, or wherever in the city of Philadelphia, now has to cease providing those meals to people that are desperate, that are impoverished, and are in need, and have nowhere to go. The reality is that there is not enough indoor feeding programs to possibly take care of the need of the hunger in the city of Philadelphia. The reality is that on any given night at Chosen 300 Ministry alone, our location seats a hundred and sixty people. We are beyond capacity, we are serving over three hundred people in one night, feeding them in two shifts, where people are standing outside in the cold to get in, while still other people are feeding on the parkway. The problem of hunger is bigger than we possibly can imagine. It's more than just those that are homeless. There are people that are making that hard decision, do I pay my rent, or do I feed my children? Do I give my children something for lunch as they go to school, or go up the gas in my car? They're making those hard decisions, and they're using these programs as avenues to balance their budgets, and to survive, and just to stay healthy. You know, we talk about a health issue. What the real health issue is, is that people aren't going to eat. And if people don't eat, they get sick. And the alternative is not for them to eat out of a trash can, they eat meals that are provided by people. Now, we say that, well, we can't provide food on the parkway anymore, we can't provide food in public parks, but people in office buildings, they can come out during their lunchtime and eat in the park. So therefore, it is now a civil rights issue. It's also an issue against those that are disabled, because we're dealing with homeless veterans, people that are handicapped, people that are struggling with addictions. They have challenges, and so therefore, they're being disenfranchised and saying that you now cannot eat. We are upset about this, and we are not satisfied. We're also concerned about the idea that the health department now wants to monitor the programs that feed on the parkway. However, the health department cannot even monitor the shelters that currently exist that are run by the city of Philadelphia. If the shelters were doing such a wonderful job and providing food in the city of Philadelphia, why in the world are they coming over to Chosen 300? Why are they going out on the streets to eat? It's because of the fact that the standards are not that high. Well, back to the economic issue. Our economy is on a rapid decline. We are in so much trouble, not only in our city, but in our country. The governor has already indicated that there is a proposal to decrease public spending in the area of social issues up to twenty percent, which accounts for about forty-one million dollars for the city of Philadelphia. With those cuts, Dr. Donald Swartz himself has indicated that that's going to cause a major impact, particularly one to mental health, where two-thirds, almost two-thirds of that forty-one million dollars will be affecting mental health programs. What's going to happen is that those that are in mental health are going to wind up on the streets. They're going to wind up needing services, and they're going to not wind up needing people to reach out to them. If they don't have a place to go and eat, what's going to happen is going to increase the climate of Philadelphia, it's going to increase aggressive panhandling, and it's going to cause a real problem in our city. We have to realize that legislation and mandates and fines is not the answer to fix the issue. But what needs to happen is that you need to get in the game with the ballplayers, the people that are out there serving on the streets. Get them together, develop best practices, develop ideas that will improve services. And if it's really a health issue, then provide some resources for real change. If you want to offer classes for how to have provide food safety, great, but it must be a volunteer opportunity. I tell you this, though, as large as our organization is, and we thank God for where he has brought us to, but we used to be one of the organizations that used to feed out of the back of our trunk. And the grandfather that goes down, there's a wonderful lady, a physician Franklin, that's maybe here today, or maybe outside waiting to get in. Her and her daughter, at ten-thirty at night, going to the city with soups and sandwiches. And they serve people in the middle of night in the freezing cold. She is just as valuable as I am. Every single person that contributes to the health and well-being of those in need are just as valuable and just as important. And I will say, I oppose with this, is that any time the city brings an injustice upon the poor, it has brought a curse upon themselves. You see, I know who I am, I am a Baptist preacher, and we always got to text with this. In the chapter book of Isaiah, when you read about the affliction that occurred of the children of Israel, it was because of one that they worship idols. But the other problem is that they neglected the poor, they neglected the widows, and they neglected those in need. And there was no justice for those that were in need. When we get to the point that we deny justice and deny treating people that are in need rights, we allow the blessings of God to be removed from us. So we must return to a city and be the city of brotherly love. The word Philadelphia comes from the Greek word aleo, which means brotherly love. And it means that we ought to care for our brothers. Are we our brother's keeper, or are we simply people that are interested in the Almighty Father? Are we interested in really caring about those that are less fortunate? Thank you so much.
Thank you both for being with us this evening. I'll now get the hearing started. As folks should have received, we have tried to set out a plan for the evening. We know there are many people who wish to speak. We are going to set out a goal for two minutes for each person. Please look at the comments you wish to make, and please come to the point. Remember that this is a hearing on the Board of Health regulations, as drafted and voted on a month ago. So I hope that each person who speaks has specific comments about the language in those regulations. We wish to hear from everybody who has signed up to speak. There are several people on the list, when folks sign in, where people didn't indicate whether they wished to speak or not. I understand that sometimes it is unknown, and tonight with all the rules and regulations, and people getting up here and the rest of it, I can imagine there were people who weren't sure if they wished to speak until they got into the room. So for anyone who left a blank on the form, I will call you in turn. And if you wish to speak, please indicate so, and you will be invited up. For everybody else, I will only call those who indicated that they wished to speak. So, I will begin with Diane Pollin, is she here?
Yes.
Good evening.
Mrs. Pollin.
Yes, please. Then you're gonna need to speak up a bit so that our recorder can pick up your voice.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for coming, and I'm gonna start you now.
Okay, great. I work in town, across the two of those windows. I tend to lead the corporate social responsibility committee for a group of nine hundred or so at a multi-national company. As the lead of that committee, we do charitable work across the city, and I lead teams of twenty or so people at a time, to Chosen 300 to serve dinner. And that's how I became aware of the situation that exists and the difficulties in getting food to the people in need. I went just last night, coincidentally, with my son. What strikes me the most is that when I leave, I take out the trans pass that I have, because I work, and I go home, and I have a hot shower, and a warm bed, and I can choose from a selection of items what I would like to feed. And not everyone has that opportunity, and therefore, for the grace of God, no, I, I am an accident away, a misfortune away, a health problem away, from me and everybody else that is feeding at Chosen 300 and on the street. The second thing I'd like to say is that I met a man named Harry in a concourse, and Harry told me that he gets asked to move all day and all night. And he is not where he wants to be by choice. He's in a location because he's been pushed to that corner. And the problem is medical conditions, namely asthma. He can't make it to specified points to eat. Harry can't get to where he needs to be to eat. And if you cut down the availability of feedings for the people that need it, you'll be creating further problems without repeating what's already been said. I strongly urge you to consider task force with those who are intimately involved with the problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Angela Stevens, do you wish to speak?
No.
Thank you. Boira Shields?
Hi. I'm a nurse, and I work downtown at Front to North Martin Street. And I think what disturbed me the most about this idea was the way it was presented. It really wasn't presented as a compromise, or let's think about a better way to feed things. It was more of a dictate or a mandate, this is how it will be, whether people like it or not. And I think that is a big smack in the face for Philadelphia, for what we represent. I think everyone else spoke very eloquently, so I'm not gonna waste time. But we are each one step away these days from a disaster, and losing our home, and losing our job. I see your friend all the time. It's not as easy these days to bounce back. And no matter what your job is, you're not secure. It could be you, 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 we all have, huh, yeah. It's not a joke. It's something to take very seriously. Were I in their shoes, wouldn't I want the best? Wouldn't I want a fair shake? Wouldn't you? I mean, jeez, we represent Philadelphia, this is us. We are our brothers, our sisters, our mothers, our fathers, the children. God, you see the kids out there? I mean, how can people just take that as, well, it's not my issue, it is our issue? And I think that if we did work together, my company is filled with people that were volunteers. It needs organization. We need some way to come together and network and say, what is your specialty? What can you offer? I'm sure we all have a lot to offer. And I think you just need to ask, and ask in the right way. Nobody likes to be told what they do.
Now, somebody has difficult handwriting. Last name is Wilson, and first name begins with a B.
That's me, Brad. Hi, guys. Well, I always say, I'm sorry, I'll speak for Brian here, behind me. Brian serves five meals a week up at Frank Garden. And his meals are very nourishing, guys, and the chicken is so good, you can brag about it. All right, he should not be known as a right to eat anywhere he chooses to. Meals are fantastic, and Brian will say thanks, but what he said ain't happening. But, um, guys, you'd be totally wrong to stop the feeding. The only thing I can agree with is to clean up the active parks, and that's the goal on the parkway, I think. I think Brian leaves the park the same way he finds it every time, he takes the trash with him. So he's a very clean dude, someone you'd be proud of, and you'd all speak up for. You know, the other churches do leave mess around, but I think the appropriate thing to do is find a resolution for everyone to clean up, and leave aside somebody finding, and that's the best thing that, like, we're all taught, is kids. And I think that'd be appropriate thing, I mean, let Brian be an example. We leave the waste every week, do that, Phil. All right, guys? Brian's just an example, that's all it is.
Queen Hill?
First of all, I'd like to thank God for letting me left this town, and that she didn't have to be so kind to me. When I first heard about this decision that the city had made, I was very appalled. Whether they made it, this is, I think they woke up on the wrong side of their head that day. Now, I get food stamps, right? Now, the only thing about food stamps is you can't get a hot meal with food stamps. So the only thing you can buy is cold food. Well, but thank God, people blind right here, and a lot of other organizations that come out and do this, hot food. You know, it's like eating cold food all winter long? And I'm homeless too. But I'm taking care of a five-year-old boy, a wife and a sixteen-year-old girl. Whenever I get some money, I send that money up to New York. And I'm living on the streets. So with that in mind, I would like to think that y'all would make a good soundless decision and just change everything. See, one thing I learned about people is this. See, if y'all always want to quit fix, right, if it costs a hundred thousand dollars to fix this, and y'all pay twenty-five thousand to fix it, and y'all said, well, fix it with twenty-five thousand, but it's not fixed, because a hundred thousand dollars to fix it for big, for a cheap way out, twenty-five thousand. Hey, come on, let's be real about it. Y'all know what I'm talking about. They already spoke about it. I lost my job, ain't never guaranteed, gee, you lose your job tomorrow, they in the same situation. What you gonna do then? How you gonna fill in when you can't feed yourself? Y'all moving on the wrong track, but we need to be back in the track of God, to keep this city, a city of brotherly love.
Jesse Stevenson? Uh, Dibek Anafen? Eric? Yogi?
Evening.
Um, I'm also for this city to be a part of the aspect of the government of the country. Um, I'm privileged to say that thirty years, um, you could be like, start a new program. You have people that they try to be an age and answer the God, but never this could be. And still be more and stronger, and I'm proud of that. Because I consider feeding people a human right, a sacred trust, that I take seriously. And I actually reach it. And again, as, as, um, Councilman and Mr. Jacob said, this, this is a way of getting up the city, doing the wrong approach, doing what may be a good thing to do in the long run. Instead of victimizing people, the city reaches them, and leaves the hungry self, and work with people. The people will, are peaceful. Um, people that are out there on the God monitoring the food programs and I see great work from them too. But understand that for all, it is the second hungriest district in this high country. And if that doesn't do the shame, if that doesn't shame the city, that we so worked it better, then we really have some problems. How can you go to sleep at night when you, when you understand these statistics that children and people are having major standards? This is a sacred trust. I live, I answer to a higher authority. Because the first food program was God, or Jehovah in the desert. Jesus, would you have told Jesus on the mountain, when he was feeding the multitudes, that you have to, that you have to have a fire or something like that? What do you mean, seriously? This is, this is what we're talking about. We're talking about, I think as public service, and this is what I see with Board of Health. Um, health is a human rights issue. And as Dr. King said, if you're not in the fight for health or human rights, you don't see it in your, in your power. And I think as Board of Health, as public service, the public is the number one resource of this state, city, of this state, of this country. And the resources must be heard, and the needs must be met. And again, this higher authority that I answer to, um, is going to dictate whether or not I answer to this, and whether or not we fight this. But understand that, and again, if the Board of Health doesn't see, and the city doesn't see that this is doing what went down the wrong way, that like Jesus said, get behind yourself. Thank you.
Patrick, uh, Julius, Julius? Can you tell your last name for me?
It's, uh, Julius. I've spelled it wrong. Um, I just wanted to make two comments there. First of all, uh, I, I recently lost my job, and I feel I have to be on a lot of these programs I apply. And, uh, if these food programs away, then, uh, I will have to, uh, probably resort to more because of this. Uh, but a lot of these places, they feed, uh, and they're right, they're very clean, uh, some of the best chicken and stuff, and that's right, uh, chicken man. But, uh, the second thing I wanted to know is, uh, if it's true that, uh, Mayor, Mayor Nuddy was saying that if, uh, legislation is, uh, improved, uh, downturns, uh, legislation is going to override it, and, uh, maybe go to the end of the day, that was one of my biggest concerns.
W. Francis Ellin?
I want to thank you all for letting me speak today. Um, I'm here as a member of a faith community, and also I have a bachelor's in health education, so I feel like I can speak to our health concerns. Um, I would like the Department of Health to really focus on some serious health issues like guns and childhood obesity. Instead of creating barriers for the faith community to actually practice their faith and following Jesus' word, to actually feed the hungry. If there are serious health problems, I think that the people in this room would be helping you address those serious health problems. And you would have been contacting them to get their input about how to deal with the serious health problems. But what my experience is in Philadelphia, and I've only been here about five years, is there's been a strategic elimination of trying to move the homeless away from public areas on the parkway. They used to stay near where the Barnes building is, at that building, and they were just staying there. My understanding, Logan Circle used to be a place where the homeless spent a lot of time before it got gentrified. Then it just, it's repeated one step after another. So it's truly not believable as a person of faith, and I, I would just really like honest answers about why this is, and some real accountability to real public health issues like guns, which kill a lot of people in this community, like real hunger. Thank you.
Oh, Chris Prince?
Yes. I represent the Catholic Church from, uh, Jersey, Jersey, and we come here to serve at home of friends, very sunny and low parts, in accordance with human data day. And, um, we understand that health is an issue, and, uh, we're concerned about this problem. And we've been trying to address our food to our friends in a, in a public manner, that they, they can be served as, uh, as our, our family members. We have to serve the food in our, in our homes, and we serve it in a healthy, in a healthy way. And I would propose to, uh, to say, let's, uh, let's all get together. There's a problem here. Let's all get together, and that's, uh, that's, this is a problem in a, in a manner that all get together as a church, as, uh, the people that are in the parks, they're being fed. Because we need to have the parks after the things like that. We understand, and I think that is a big part of the problem too. The park being, being, that's a problem. And also, um, I think with the world, that even if that happens, uh, the city will, uh, probably, uh...
Is, uh, Lakeford?
Yes. Well, I would like to do my own day. I just have few brief points I would like to make. Uh, one thing, uh, I believe that it is very true that we are as a newspaper that is delivered and also sold by the homeless. Uh, one step away, uh, it is very true. We are in this time, all one step away. Whether it be a meal, a place to live, a home, uh, many different issues are going on today. I do think that we can come together, everyone, to address this issue, to still be able to feed the homeless. Maybe make a few tweaks with that. Uh, I think that possibly the city, you know, still wants to be the city of brotherly love, and keep feeding the homeless, and we can just do it in possibly a different manner, uh, in regard to all coming together. I know I've been out there myself, very often in the parkway, feeding the homeless. Um, and I do believe that it is a very, very valuable program that a lot of organizations are doing right now, trying to get out there, feed the homeless, give a hot meal. Um, I do believe we should all come together. And also, um, I know personally, I have had food at my house that I have requested, you know, different organizations, not you. Uh, just to make that clear, when I had different organizations that, um, that I had tried to reach out to, to basically say, "I have food at my house that I had received from what's called Equal Dollars in East Falls." It's a wonderful organization, um, and what they do in Equal Dollars is they have a different type of currency other than just paper money. And basically what they do, if you go to Equal Dollars on a Monday, you can purchase food with their own money. Okay? It's just money that they made up. It's a different type of currency. It's not US dollars, but it's to help people that they have lost their job or need help. Okay? So I just think that that's another great way, and I just think that organizations, if you're reaching out to them and letting them know about other ways to receive food or your distribution, that they should then for, take that help. Because it's more food that they could possibly distribute. I don't think that anyone should turn away from someone offering food to feed the homeless. And I think we can all come together and take care of the city and those of you. Thank you very much.
My name is Elizabeth Clower, and I'm at Liberty Paramount. We serve every Friday night at nineteen and nine, right in front of the front of the parkway. Um, people that we serve are friends of ours. We look forward to seeing them every Friday night. And when they come, the food is sometimes the only meal they've had all day. We believe in the, as others have said, in the name of the justice of God to do it. And we are part of our rework history as well as, uh, civil rights, um, it would be civil rights as well. The regulations and restrictions was severely in keeping the way that we do our history right now. We come out with food from local places, and, um, they come from kitchens. We do not have a facility, our kitchen's our own building. We rent a semi-worn steak, so we cook and prepare it with members of our people's homes. Um, we do wear gloves, and we take proper precautions. I just think that it is a travesty to take this away from people who are friends. And again, I have T-shirts that if, like, some of us were furloughed, they lost their jobs, and it can easily happen, um, and that's why.
Doctor Schwartz, a pleasure to see you, nice to see you again. We met, uh, back when we were in third, this building, Mayor's Forum. I was the chap who had the proof about general assistance being recovered from the Commonwealth from social security benefits. Now, I've been homeless since two thousand and two. I've eaten on the streets of the city of Philadelphia in two thousand and two and three, mainly because the food in the Red Avenue Shover at the end of the month is not palatable, is not edible, okay? I've been lobbying Harrisburg since two thousand and five, helping to help the homeless. And if you want to know who I am, I'm not going to go through all my curriculum vitae. You can call in the Department of Public Health, Carol Rogers. You can call Project Home, Sister Mary Scully, or Jimmy Miller. You can call the Homeless Happiness Project, Marcia Coe, and the Executive Director, for my legal contributions. And most recently, in the city, you can vote to Joe Savage or Roberta Chance, who the area office has supported House. My actual function is not simply homeless, because I have been homeless. I've done some other things in my strange, twisted life. And right now, what I do mostly is act as a political consultant. What is wrong with you people? We face the crisis by this governor who you continue to misunderestimate, use George Bush's term. Don Corbett is the most experienced practitioner that I've ever seen of power politics and the strategy of divide and rule. And he is winning, and this city is losing and going down the tubes. And you come out with this regulation, which alienates the homeless, which alienates half of the faith-based community, which has committed itself to coming out publicly and trying to do something that the city cannot do on its own. And to top it off, you've confused all the social workers. They don't understand why this has to happen here. When I first heard about this, my reaction was, I'm going to come here and say one thing to you. Tableaus, kill this entire regulation until after Governor Corbett's budget is voted up or down. That is my position. I will ask you for one thing, because I'm going to be stuck going out to Harrisburg again. Doctor Schwartz, I need approximately three hundred copies of the Philadelphia Homeless Death Review Report for twenty-ten. And I would ask you to deliver them to Project Home, the attention of Sister Mary Scully, to my event. And that is about all I can say except. In terms of the faith-based community, I have one last point of comment. I would ask all of you to go home and read your Bible. And I would refer you to the Gospel of Matthew, verses thirty-one, chapter twenty-five, verses thirty-one to forty-six. Thank you for your attention.
I'm not supposed to meditate here anymore. I'm homeless, not alone, I'm just kind of speaking around the city. But, um, I want to begin though, a lot of, uh, what I wanted to say has already been said. Since I've been a part of this for six years, I wanted to say, say it myself, to you. And, uh, I am pastor of the Ministry of Mercy, and for six years, even if I'm on the parkway, and probably taking six years to feed as many people as it's given us, needs of one year. But nonetheless, we've done that. I feel like we've done our part. And I'm really proud of you to say I had my hand in that. Um, I really did what God wanted us to do. God has instructed all of us, I believe, actually. As far as the, uh, whether it was sanitary or not, I know it's really kind of goes without speaking to say that it's a lot more unsanitary to send these men out to eat out of trash can. And happening, it's been exposed to the elements, and the insects. And, um, you know, I know that none of us would knock that for anybody. Our own family members, and they're the grace of God for any of us. And the other thing that I wanted to say is that, um, you know, Philadelphia, as many have said, if the members of the Church of New York has taken a lot of hits over the years, and we've seen a lot of comments about that, and we know it's changed for, for City of Brotherly Shove, and all kinds of things. You know, I think that the Church, I love this city of Philadelphia. And, um, you know, I think that the Church, uh, can be of help to church and the City of Brotherly Shove, back into the City of Brotherly Shove. Uh, I would just ask you to, to, to do our heart things, to reach out and make this back to the City of Brotherly Shove, and what we have in common at the time.
Laura Schlescher? Caroline Steiner?
So I originally came up here to read a statement on behalf of North Food Not Bombs. Um, but as I sat here reading over, I started to feel like it's kind of too soft. So I'm gonna pick out a couple parts, and then we're gonna speak a little bit personally. First, it's important to acknowledge that there is no need to address a problem that has never manifested itself in Philadelphia. Doctor Avon Nelson, who is here, said it herself. These regulations operate on the theory that there must be mandatory rules to ensure safety. There have never been any reports of anyone getting sick or experiencing health issues from being free food-served outdoors. In and of itself, this proves that groups are aware of the importance of cleanliness and safety. Our track record speaks for itself. Instead of causing health problems, we are to promote public health by distributing food at hungry Philadelphia locals. Also, at the February ninth hearing, we were assured that the permit process would be short and easy, involving a one-page application. But the regulation requires groups to describe their menus in the permit application an entire year in advance. Groups like mine, Food Not Bombs, prepare healthy food and varied meals at every serving. Not only is it impossible for us to anticipate what ingredients we will have given to us, but our menu changes with each meal. It certainly won't fit in a one-page application. And why standardize groups in this way when no restaurant is obliged to submit their menu to any health department inspector? And many restaurants offer similarly varied, similarly varied menus. A public serving under these regulations is described as three or more people? What about tailgating at Philly games, if you share with the car next to you? These rules can hardly help with these selectively enforced, but the distinctions between the groups that will be required to get permits, like a church group that offers meals for homeless Philadelphia in the parkway, and those that won't, like a college campus group that puts out a bowl of candy when they are cabling outdoors? If that's not about social class, then I'm waiting to see that distinction. As the representative from chosen three hundred said, existing places to serve food indoors fall short of having capacity to provide food just for homeless people, never mind everyone who is food insecure in this city. Capacity is a far bigger problem than the problem these rules supposedly address. There are not nearly enough organizations quite in Honduras, Philadelphia. And these regulations would effectively disappear many of the groups that presently seek to put in under Honduras. We oppose all barriers to basic human rights and needs. These regulations fundamentally violate human dignity. Okay, alright. Let's just stop pretending this is about health, honestly. Starvation is a health hazard. Far more than worrying about, like, if there are hand washing stations at the places that we're serving, we are already sufficiently taking care of that problem. Not to mention, we're filling a role that the city isn't, and it doesn't cost you a dime. It would cost us money to provide food. So really, you know, but I can't see how anybody could pretend to give a fuck about homeless and hungry Philadelphians if these rules are gonna come into play. Like, if you want us to be able to keep putting food on the table, then you need to take this shit off the table.
Jordan Rowan? Lawrence Henderson?
I'm not really used to hearing anything political about my style of service at all. Like you said, it's not anything. These families out here on the corner nowadays, trying to get their own facilities, washing hands, with their red gloves, shirts covered every day. I see it every day. I would see none of that. Who doesn't want to be a big community owner, if they're being out there? Centralized everything, and people can't make it very good days. And if you rock in different jerseys, they can't make it good days. They have a car there. And what's gonna happen is they're gonna still end up down here on the parkway, or perhaps you report it, or, 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 and then people are gonna lock them up. And then what's gonna happen is you lock them up, and they go to jail, or, 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 Mr. Williams, and that coffee can't be in your way. It doesn't make sense.
Oh, one thing. Twenty-five percent of people on the parkway don't even live it for it, up to about that.
Where you spread my church?
My name is Barbies. I'm a former home replacement, I'm here in Philadelphia. I actually live in San Antonio now. Um, I don't know, man. I come from a different thought of a lot of people in the city of Philadelphia. I come from the Leonis Smith, the Chris School, the David Fairs, like, all these people. And I look around the room, and I see, like, some eternal affairs. I see a lot of people who know these people from back there. And, and like, and I'm talking about, like, when the groupers, these are people that, like, listen, they bring their karma on any given day, and ask me to come out and just talk to communities about, like, you know, helping the homeless, or like, when, when they wanted to stop the, the center out, and, and out down in, uh, in Mantua, like, I come. And this meeting, when I heard about this, it was kind of crazy. Nine cops, nine cops, like, sitting on the parkway intimidating people, like, asking me questions, like, why I'm standing over here, what in the heat? That's insane. It's, it's like, insane. And I'm gonna tell you something. From a person who used to be homeless, who used to be a criminal, if y'all stop feeding here in Philadelphia, the crime rate in these stores, in these mazies, in these galleries, just want to be a rat. Believe me, like, people will be hitting these stores like it's crazy. And you worried about their center on the park? Listen. I'm so blessed to have a job today. I'm so blessed that people like, I'm talking about, I was in, I was in O'Brien, when we even started feeding out here. When, when the janitor used to walk underground at, 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 at Thirteenth and Market, all the way back to South, all the way back to South Roche. All the way back to Squeef, and they had mattresses stacked this high, and they didn't stop feeding homeless people. And I don't know what the mayor thinks you can do in there. And another thing I just wanted to say, when it come election time, and the mayor, and, and whoever else signed this thing, want people to come work for him, don't come down the parkway and give them people, come give out flyers for them, when it come election time. And when they give them forty dollars to pass out stuff for election time, and then now, y'all want to just tell me, you know, I'm done with you. I'm in the office, I don't got, this, it's insane, man. It's, it's not right. And when I heard about it, I couldn't wait to yell, "Right here, my boss, leave early today." This is crazy, because that's why you know I got a job, like, any given day when I don't have food, that's why I come. Right downtown. I know I can get a meal. And, listen, it's, it's not right. And I know for a fact that the people like the Davis School, the Davis Affairs, the Leonis Smith, the Diane Johnson, listen, Sister Mary Scully, who she used to be, when she used to be out here on a regular, all them people were not had us, and we'd be washing up before I had to sweep that damn carpet. Literally. Like, listen, man, this is insane. And I, I want to say is this, y'all suck this food thing now, and I won't become a citizen of that, unless I'm a god.
Mike Chat?
Mike Chat?
Mike Chat?
Mike Chat?
My cops have barricaded the door outside.
Have barricaded the door outside.
I just got a phone call, and it's getting tense. People outside would like to ask.
People outside would like to ask.
If lawyers would come downstairs and address the crowd.
Lawyers would come downstairs and address the crowd.
At least encourage them to be peaceful.